All to order this meeting of the Southwest Consolidation Consolidated Zoning Board. Uh, on what is this Wednesday, January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three? So I guess we want to start with a roll call. I'm Jason Cooper, the chairman.
Okay, I will call the roll. John DeGrand. Randy Hutchins is absent. Terry Atwell on Zoom.
Here.
David Wolf. Darren Schaefer on Zoom.
I'm here.
Jason Cooper.
Here.
Brian Walker. Brian is not present. Uh, Rebecca Barton on Zoom.
Present.
Donna Getzman on Zoom.
Here.
That completes the role. We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any uh adds, deletes, revisions and um? And I guess to add to the agenda? None noted?
None.
Thank you. Um, do we have any disclosure of conflicts of interest?
None.
Okay, disclosure of external contacts or discussions?
None again.
All right, we'll run along then. Hey, uh, approval of minutes from October twenty-six, twenty-two. Um, if everybody's already read the minutes and agrees with them, then we I'd uh be ready for a motion to approve the minutes.
Uh, Terry Atwell moved to approve.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes, approval minutes are approved. Okay, uh, next item is board reports, which will be the Board of County Commissioners' actions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board, Sean Pendley, county planning staff. Uh, for Board of County Commissioners' actions, there was a conditional use permit for accessory buildings located at two-six-one-two-five West Two-hundred-and-seventh Street. If you recall, this was the one application at your last meeting in October of last year. That application for the conditional use permit was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on December first, two thousand twenty-two. If you like, I could.
Yeah.
Provide an update on the planning commission actions as well.
Planning Commission actions is the next item?
Sure. We had Sean Pendley, planning staff. We had a planning commission meeting uh just last night, um, January twenty-fifth. And on that agenda, we had the year in review for the two thousand twenty-two actions for the planning commission, also a uh uh strategic plan review for upcoming cases for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, in addition, we had a draft amendment discussion for accessory buildings. If you recall, we had talked about um draft changes, uh, proposed changes and amendments to the zoning regulations in regards to accessory buildings. And so there was an initial presentation and uh a review of draft changes to those regulations. The uh planning commission agreed with those changes, essentially what we are, uh, staff is recommending. An increase in the total building area that would be allowed for accessory buildings. A- and also recommending a a separate process, so it would no longer be a conditional use permit for accessory buildings. It would be a new permit process we're recommending for accessory building permit. Um, a- and so we're increasing the allowance for total area. Anything that would go above this increase in area would still require going through a review with the zoning board and B O C C, but it would not be a condition to use permit. It'd be accessory building permit, and so that would not be subject to terms uh or expiration. Uh, but it would still go through a process. So we presented the first round of uh proposed amendments last night. Um, and the uh the commission recommended staff to proceed with those changes. We'll bring that back before the planning commission uh at a public hearing uh either in February or March. So we hope to have uh those updates soon before the Board of County Commissioners this spring. Um, in addition, we've presented some updates on other projects for the director's report. Uh, Jay and I presented some updates on um other actions for the planning commission, and uh that concludes the planning commission update.
Right, thank you. Somebody have any questions or comments? Okay, uh, moving on, business before the board today is uh we have a draft zoning board bylaws that can be uh presented, and Jay?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jay Leipzig, the planning department. Um, want to introduce Peg Trent, who's our chief legal counsel, that will be going over the draft bylaws uh with you this evening. These are very similar to um prepared uh and approved by the planning commission uh last year. So kind of the next step in that I talked about previously is um bringing them before the planning commission, then going through all the zoning boards here in the next few months. So uh with that of an introduction, I'll I'll turn it over to Peg and she'll walk through the document with you.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time tonight to uh go through um the proposed bylaws for the operation of the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board. Um, to as uh Jay said, my name's Peg Trent, chief counsel, and just to give you a little bit of history. About a year ago, it was brought to our attention, I think you'll recall, um, that we were looking and examining examining all of the county boards and learned that we didn't have oaths of office and remember signing of acknowledgement of the code of ethics. In addition of our preliminary review, legal determined we didn't have bylaws for a lot of your boards, which are required for operation. Um, specifically, we started with the planning commission, and it was our intent, after going from the planning commission with the bylaws, then to move from each zoning board. So tonight, what we're doing is moving forward with uh your zoning board. Our intent would be for me to go to each of the other remaining zoning boards in the different consolidated districts with similar documents, but what are applicable um to them as to um location and what they're to do. And um, review those with you. Um, it shouldn't take that long for me to walk through the document and answer any questions you have. And then what I, if you're comfortable with it, we can go forward with you approving it tonight. Or we can wait till your next meeting, so you have another further opportunity to review. I can come back, make any corrections you have at that time for your adoption, so it's your pleasure and what you feel. Um, so with that, are there any questions about the process? I was going to try and keep it quick tonight, so we're not keeping you long. And I think um a lot of it you probably have heard through the planning commission. I know Terry Atwell's on, and I know she was present, so she can attest to some of it, maybe speak and help us as we go through it if there's questions. If that's okay. Okay, hearing uh no objection to that process. Um, the first out of the gate, and this is an eight-page document, it talks about um the establishment of this actual um consolidated zoning board. And as it notes that this was um created, or consolidated, if you will, on December nineteenth of two thousand two by resolution one-twenty-three-oh-two. It also indicates that this board is um came about under state statute, which provided you the site in the first paragraph, further outlining um the name of the board and that it is in the unincorporated area of Johnson County. Um, so after we moved through the establishment, it also put in that the document of the resolution in oh-two what your purpose was. So it's taken from that resolution along with what's in state statute. Essentially, the zoning board is an advisory role, and it's to submit recommendations to the board, which you've been doing, the Board of County Commissioners, regarding approval or disapproval of subdivision plats, development plans, rezoning requests, C U Ps, special permits, acceler- ex- accessory dwellings, and dw- uh permit applications concerning lands within your district, your jurisdiction. Um, and then in fulfilling your role uh in connection with comprehensive plan and zoning shall promote and be guided by the interest of public health, safety, and welfare. So those are taken straight from the resolution creating you and from state statute. I'll take a pause right now. Um, are there any questions about that, um, those two clauses? Okay, moving forward as to the bylaws, um, again, just reiterating that the purpose of these bylaws is the operation or transaction of business of how you're doing. As a matter of fact, you'll find you're conducting yourself very much in line with this, so this is more a codification, if I will, just from my initial observation of five minutes of you. I watched that you probably are following um uh this process. But essentially, um, they're to facilitate and not obstruct you doing your business. You each have equal rights. The chairperson also um has um the ability to vote just as equally as everyone and to make um a motion or second if need be. It also establishes on page two at the top that you will be following Robert's Rules of Order, and we're up to the twelfth edition now, or any addition as it is amended. Um. And I do need to put there Robert's Rules of Order as amended, so we do need to add that now. So I'm going to add that to the document, so you can see it redlined as we go along. Um, because you want to make sure that you're always using the current. Okay. Um, each member may initially speak. It also limits that a member on your dais, on board member. You have initially five minutes um maximum in order to speak, to express your view on a matter. Um, you know, as a courtesy, the chairperson would limit that discussion. However, that's for debate on one item. So let's say that you have an item that comes, you have a question about a conditional use permit. The first item, you had a question about um, let's say, traffic. Five minutes to talk about that issue, trying to keep you so that others have an opportunity to speak. So then, let's say you have another issue with that conditional use permit concerning setback. Then you can have another five minutes to talk about that. We're not limiting you total, we're just saying on an item, a debate to five minutes that the chair would be enforcing. And the reason that's possible, again, is so that everybody has an opportunity on the dais of all the members to comment, and that your meetings aren't drug out here and you're not repeating yourselves. But you know, occasionally, that's the chair's discretion. If there's an additional question, a follow-up as a result of someone else's question um pertaining to traffic or setback, even though you spoke five minutes, the chair, it can say yes, go ahead. Because you you, they want to make sure that debate, that you've had an opportunity to get all your questions answered. Um, you have the right to make inquiries, seek out information from staff on pending matters, and you have a right and a duty to vote, except if when you have a conflict of interest. So I will stop at that point. Are there any questions on any of those um conditions of these bylaws?
Becky Barton. Becky Barton, I do not have a question, but um we did not receive a copy of this. So at home, the only thing I have is what I'm reading. So if you could kind of s- make sure it's scrolled while we're going over this, it would be very helpful for me.
Yes, I apologize. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that, and I apologize.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Um, also, I just was told by Megan, she just, right before the start of this meeting, and I mean moments before, if not right at the uh bewitching hour, emailed it to you too. Just so you know, you have a copy now, but I'll I'll make sure I scroll along. Okay. Um.
Just a a thought or curiosity, do we have um a copy of the old bylaws?
You didn't have any. That was the problem. You have no bylaws. And so that's why we're giving you bylaws now that are similar to what we're seeing and implementing with the other, um, if you will, planning and zoning boards. And uh, so that's why. The planning commission had some old bylaws, but not zoning. And I went and asked the uh.
For most of the planning commission? Also, on the zoning board, is that?
No.
And he was, I know, uh, an older gentleman, it was Richard Glenn Boner, I remember him.
David, speak into the mic. I can't hear you.
Both the old members were on the planning commission. All those members were also on zoning boards, so the bylaws might have been the same. I'm just curious to see uh what their um, maybe their purpose or their mission was.
Well, it's, right, so my understanding, you know, the planning commission is going to be different, just like um from the zoning board's purpose. Because the planning commission also takes on that legislative role and comprehensive plan and review that they do, that you do see as well. But with the planning commission, um, actually, Johnson County was be- ahead of his ti- ahead of their times than the state statutes at the time, and it created the planning commission so as operational. When the state law, the state got into understanding what we, Johnson County already had, um, they implemented a state statute, so they had to reorganize the planning commission. So the planning commission actually had bylaws from the original when they had created it before state statute. And then um upon the reorganization under the state statute, they dissolved everything and got rid of their bylaws, probably not knowingly, but did it. So the zoning boards, for some reason, and I've asked the attorneys, and I have attorneys in my office that have been here, what, twenty-five, thirty-five years, so quite a while? And no one is aware of any bylaws. They said that they discussed it. It was brought, I guess, from the former director to the boards, but never um adopted or brought forward. And so now we're just trying to get you in compliance.
Okay.
Those are great questions, great history.
Mr. Wolf, uh, Jay Leipzig, just to further elaborate on what Peggy just said too, there was a brief uh section in our subdivision regulations that talked about the duties of the zoning board.
I thought there was something that I had read.
It's, it was about four sentences, and there was no, you know, in terms of a full bylaws, in terms of the the full explanation of the duties or the the various components of it, didn't include anything like that.
Okay.
And also to take on to what Jay just said, in those regulations, it actually said um that you will create your own bylaws for the operation. So it even put it in those regs for you to do it.
I know, I I, that was a long time ago when I read that. Um, read through that, but um uh, that was just something that I thought that I.
Hmm, yeah, and we lifted.
Like to have looked at to compare to.
Yeah, and you'll, and if you don't adopt it tonight, you can go, because staff actually prepared these from the template, and then we reviewed it within our legal department. But basically, we lifted your role from those regulations and then made sure we put the state statute, so you had that. And I actually have the resolution, which was what, three or four pages here, and which also created the Northwest at the time.
Yeah, the other question that that made me think about those was in the purpose and mission.
Mm-hmm.
And um, maybe I'm not reading it uh correctly, or maybe I'm overthinking it. But um, it seems to me in our, in the history of my position, um, part of our job is to uh work out the the uh plans of the the um county and with the the landowners that are out in our area to come up with with variances and things like that that make sense for that specific property and and what that specific landowner is wanting to do, whether it be a radio tower or a or a accessory building for their business, you know?
Well, um, I understand that, and I, probably that's how operationally you've been working as a board. But generally speaking, as you know, and I'm, you're know way more than me, because you do this on a monthly basis, but as you know, the applicant comes in, staff works with them. Um, you come back with questions because you have a familiarity and a background of your community, as well as other skill sets to make some recommendations and inquiries, and those are the recommendations you're referring to as a result of speaking with the applicant. For instance, did you think about this, or how did you address that traffic or setback? Um, you know, I'm familiar with that out there. Did you do this? So you could ask the applicant, and as a result of it, can create some recommendations.
Okay.
So that's what you are in fact doing um when you're asking your questions. So you are helping out us, thank you, because you're trying to resolve these issues because of your familiarity.
Okay.
And then you have staff to also make sure we're in compliance with the regulations, you know, that something we may be suggesting because of the uniqueness of that prod- property and project, they're able to go through the regs and then connect it. But no, those are good questions.
Okay. That was it, thank you.
Okay, no, thank you. Um, moving on now to page two, which is the, and I'll keep reminding me to turn here, members and composition. So this is a board that consists of nine members. Again, that is by resolution. It was designed um to be nine members, including the township trustee of each gardener and McCamish townships, and the remaining members shall be appointed by the board of who are residents of said townships that make up uh the Southwest uh zoning board. So the only requirement for two of those members, if I'm understanding, is that um we have the trustee that's elected. I take it to the gardener is the gardener McCarnish, town McCarmish, McCamish, how do I say that, McCamish, McCamish?
McCamish.
Township, and the remaining ones, they just have to live in that jurisdiction of the Southwest zoning board. If the um, and at this point currently, we didn't get into this because that's going to be in the rules of order for the boards of commission. But generally speaking, if they have specific requirements that the person has to be, those are generally picked um by um the uh commissioner for that district of where that location is. So for those two, wherever that would be, that would either be in um, I guess, uh, District Six or District Three, that, I'm not sure where that, those are located, if that's six. Or I'm not positive, but it would be in one of those districts, maybe Jay knows. District Six, so District Six would appoint it. So the remaining board members, because they're only to be living in there in that jurisdiction, technically, um, you don't want a board all pointed by District Six Commissioner because the rules of order require that they be equally dispersed, so it should be um that it's coming from all commissioners, but they have to reside in there. And I know that that practice may not be being done that way right now, but the board tomorrow, in their COW, their committee of the whole, is reexamining their um rules of order and having these discussions. So more to come on that topic tomorrow about that, but I just bring that out as of being transparent, so you know that there was some discussion that's going to surround that. Because I'm not sure we've been doing it the way that the current rules are um a resolution on appointments by the board. But regardless, you're here, you're appointed, you have your term. I'm just trying to say that the board may need to amend the rules to do what they're really doing in practice, to codify what they're doing, or something needs to change. So I just wanted to put a pause there.
Terry Atwell. I I have, I have a question. I I know what you mean by when you say appointed by the board.
Right.
If somebody from outside was reading that, they'd be going, well, the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board? Do their own, or should that be Board of County Commissioners?
Yes, and I noticed that when I was reading it, so I thank you. Going to add that throughout the document, we want to uh make, to change that to be Board of County Commissioners when we're referring to the county commission. And I noticed that up above too, Terry, so just, you're right, to be clear that everyone knows. Um, I think you are correct that we need to be doing it, so I'll go back and make that change as well. Thank you. So um, let's see here, if a trustee fails to give consent to serve on the zoning board, the board shall appoint a resident of such township to serve. So if they aren't the trustee, then it goes to the next person who lives in that trustee, that township. Um, and anybody, person that serves in that trustee's place shall hold the per- position on the zoning board as long as the trustee serves on the township board. And this becomes really tricky, because you could have this person who is elected to the township, be a township trustee, be on this zoning board, and be on the planning commission as a um thing, and I think, Terry, don't you have that, that transpires in this situation, yeah?
Yeah.
So, and, yeah, and that's all legal, and the way that they set up, you know, others felt, is that a conflict? But when you look in the state statute and the resolution, that's the way it's set up. So just wanted to give you that um interpretation.
Uh, Peggy, sorry to interrupt, but I have another question.
Uh-huh.
I- i- is there a timeframe or a trustee like me, after an election, is is there a timeframe that we would have to assert uh our position on the zoning board?
It um, uh, it does not indicate when, um, and I'm looking at the origination document and the resolution that I have. It didn't go into that detail. Um, I think it's when there's a vacancy, but if that person doesn't meet that criteria, then they need to be removed from the board, so that would be immediately. So upon you taking office, that other person no longer qualifies to hold in that role, so that's when that would occur. And I think later on in the document, when we talk about vacancy, um, which we'll get into, it does uh say when um you no longer qualify. So you will be able to cover it through there.
Uh, David Wolf, um, on that, um, in the past, we've had some um some timeframe that's lapsed to getting someone appointed to the board, when we had people waiting for the phone call to do that. So um, you know, if if that uh, that trustee is is um not, is coming, going out of that position, but still available to be on the committee or the board, and that, that it doesn't um kick somebody off or that you need to fill that position, if you're terminating their position as trustee, why wouldn't you just make a a way of that person continuing by
Hmm.
Um, by the position that's needed.
Um, great question.
Another part to that question, do we have a, a uh, uh, what if um, the, say, there's a, there's a timeframe that the uh sixth district position is open on the commissiony, Board of Commissioners? And no one's getting appointed to the, is there another route to get uh voted on the zoning board, okay?
Um, excellent questions, and this also will be discussed tomorrow during the COW when they talk about appointment. But there currently is a resolution that if a person serves until there, another person is replaced, that's the way it is. There is sixty days once a vacancy is declared um for that commissioner who is to appoint, to make a nomination and the board to approve. Um, if that does not occur within the time period, there's a ninety days, within ninety days of that vacancy, the chairman can come in and appoint instead of the person of that district. Um, our former chair elected not to do that. He felt that that was um the role of that district to nominate. So he did not exercise, I even brought it up to him. Um, so that is where you're seeing that delay sometimes and getting people appointed. But bottom line, you serve until um you have the opportunity, but this will be a discussion tomorrow. We'll talk about it probably as we go through um the rules of order of the commission, so that they're familiar with that and how that's working or not working.
So, uh, David Wolf again, um, so if that circumstance, if the chair was not to uh take up that is there another way to to fill the vacancies on the board?
No, that would just require that district member to come forward, and that's why we have vacancies, that that happens. But um I think when you have a situation like this of a qualification, that they have to be the trustee, those two positions, I'm sure Jay would be in my ear and everybody's ear talking about it to get that moving, that appointment. The other one, I wouldn't be as worried, because they reside in that, um, if their term came to a conclusion, but in this case, we would just be acting upon it. Have we had a vac- I sh- I'm afraid to answer, ask this question, but have we had a vacancy on the trustee that was a holdover for a while?
N- no, not on the trustee, because I'm the other trustee.
Okay, yeah.
But we have had vacancies.
Right.
For a long period of time, and it was during a period that there was, that was the period that um Northwest was having problems filling their positions.
Mm-hmm.
But we had people that were waiting to get called to fill ours, and then um, that was that time where we, that the um the planning department kind of was at the they needed to get things done, so they were wanting, they thought maybe if we joined the North and the South, at that time, we'd have more commitments to the, to the board.
And, and that is an issue, finding volunteers that meet all the requirements. And there, that is an issue to consider maybe into the future, you know, how that looks with volunteers in general. This is a
Right, but that was, what I'm, what I'm getting at is that was that time period where we, we had people that, that wanted to come on to the board, but were not getting called either by the
By the
by two, two, uh, by both, by the sixth district commissioner and our former chair. So we, we're kind of stuck with.
Okay, yeah, well, thank you for taking the time to explain it, because that's good for me to know, to enlighten the county commissioners, maybe not to that degree of specificity, but at least giving them an idea that maybe we may want to revise it. So when I'm walking through their document tomorrow, so more to come, I will bring that up.
Okay.
I'll bring that along, and then Jay can report back to you too. Or if I'm back here next month with these bylaws, we, I can report back to you too. Okay, those are all good questions. Thank you. So the term of the office is for three years. Again, that's all grounded in the resolution of the creation of this, of this particular board. There's no compensation, I'm sorry. I hear you don't even get a dinner. So there's no, I'm sorry, Jay. So no compensation. Another thing, just a reminder that we conduct ourselves in a professional manner, businesslike manner, and that we respect, show respect and following these rules. And again, I'll go throughout this document to add Board of County Commissioners and members of the public to show them equally the respect professionally. The code of ethics is also being examined by the Board of County Commissioners. We anticipate to bring that forward for the commissioners' review in February, mid-February. Once that's adopted, the amended code of ethics, we'll probably be back at you with our attorneys. Again, I think Mr. Hay goes on the line right now from our office, and we'll be back out to explain the new code of ethics and the revisions, and there is more to come with that, with revisions. And once that's revised, then we'll be asking you to sign again and acknowledge receipt of that. But that's to comply with the current code of ethics that is adopted by the board. Right now, you have already seen the ethics, which I think was from the eighties, that they had brought that forward, so it hasn't been examined since then, or eighty-eight, I think. Conflicts of interest, this is a topic of, we started with the planning. The only difference now is the direction for board members and the elected officials, that you, you have a conflict if you have a pecuniary interest in a matter. So it isn't just financial, but some interest, some stake in the game, whether in some direct or intangible way, whether personal or professionally, that you benefit, or you have a substantial interest as defined under the state statute. So in Kansas, there is a requirement. Usually you'll hear it when people, when you ran for office for trustee, you filed probably a substantial interest form. I don't know, you may or may not, I'm not familiar. Yeah, you do. So when you file that form, you're supposed to disclose all your conflicts. Well, similarly, we're going to be in the county, making sure that you file that form when you're a member, so that we know what you are, your interests are. And what's was happening before, under the current code of ethics, is the appearance of impropriety. It's very broad, very subjective. Anything could give an appearance of impropriety, which then makes you have to recuse yourself. Well, we saw a situation, if you recall, and you probably heard the buzz, Terry will attest to it. She was a part of that planning when the solar regs came through, that we had an issue of almost not having a quorum, because everybody was getting bounced off because of the appearance of impropriety. Well, we want something that's more measurable, less subjective, not that broad, that's measurable. And this is a rule that you're seeing statewide, it's the local commission. And if there is a violation, it's a crime, and could be punished with a misdemeanor punishment, and could result in your removal from the board on various levels. So I think that's a better standard than we're getting into kind of this appearance issue. And it's very clear and measurable, a pecuniary interest for an attorney to look at, as well as substantial interest. You just got to keep that form updated. So more to come on that and how that'll look, but we probably will have a form you'll complete. We keep it with Jay's or my office. I don't, I think more would be better with legal, so it's confidential. And that way, we know, checking if you have a question, you check with the chief counsel or our attorneys to see if you have a conflict, if it applies. Under the law, and it won't be in this particular case, if you divulge, normally you can still vote on it in certain situations. You won't have that here. Here, if you have an interest, you have a conflict. And I love seeing that at the beginning of your meeting, you're calling it out. That is outstanding best practice. So it's making you do a belly check. So I'm going to pause right there. Are there any questions on the conflict of interest? And I think, Terry, you've been through all of this. The only thing we removed is that appearance of impropriety.
Yeah, I, I do have one quick question on the conflict of interest. So based on what has took place through the planning commission, if the same sort of instance was to happen on an item with the zoning board, and we already know that we're clear and don't have a conflict, but yet there's the general public that come to the meeting and assert that there is, is there going to be a mechanism that somebody from your staff, you know, speaks up for, you know, our zoning board members that can say, hey, this person doesn't have a conflict, and they're, they're able to stay on here? Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. Terry, another, you guys are asking incredibly good questions, because I do feel that is imperative, that legal, and we do have legal teams now, they're assigned. They weren't in the past to attend your meetings, so you'll see Bob Ford and Robert Ford and Ryan Haga, who's on the line tonight, switching off and covering boards, because they're assigned to the zoning boards and planning commission. So they will, you usually will have a, and now that we're doing Zoom, it's really good. So they'll have an ability that if there's an issue, or say that one of them could not attend. If you have an issue, we'll make sure either myself or some attorney covers it to make sure that we, if we know that this is going to be an issue, that we're here to tell that story. Because I, I think that provides that, as you as a volunteer, that protection, if you will, that we have examined it as the attorney.
Thank you.
So that's a good question. And I think we changed this because of all of the, what we were seeing with the planning commission. This needed to be cleaned up. So resignation, if you resign, you just want to make sure you give a little written notice, conveyed to the chairperson of the board and the clerk of the board. In the absence of a written, the member may orally resign to the director of planning, but who shall advise the board. And we should clean up the zoning board and board, so you know who's doing what on this. But it would be to the Board of County Commissioners that they resign, so they know there's a mechanism and paper trail in order to speed up that process, which we know now is creating an issue. So vacancy, again, shall be made by the board, that's the Board of County Commission. And in the event, in the event of that not occurring, prior to the expiration, the successor shall be appointed within 60 days. The successor, and there's your language, Mr. Wolf, that the successor shall serve an unexpired portion of the departing member's term. So you'll serve that remaining, but you'll continue. And the rules of order for the Board of County Commission is more detailed on the 90-day and all of that other process. Vacancies, now we're trying to get really into detail of the vacancies. Again, I'm going to try and keep moving here, as I promised. Vacancies and removal of the board members. If a, if a board member no longer meets the qualifications, as we discussed, that's a reason for a vacancy to be declared. If you fail to attend three or more consecutive, now there could be reasons for an absent with cause. That is up to the chair and the board and would not, if that's, you know, people get ill or things happen, that is understandable. But this is there for people who, unfortunately, it happens, abuse the system. With Zoom now, I think we've resolved a lot of those issues, so I think that that takes care of that a lot of times. Again, if you violate the Board of, the code of ethics, that is another reason. And then we added, if you plead guilty to a crime that is a felony or convicted of a misdemeanor. We've had issues surrounding that, so that's why we're putting that out there. There is a resolution that kind of outlined that, but we're kind of consolidating and making sure you're aware of that. Your meeting shall be held in June of each year to elect from your member a chairperson and a vice chair by a majority vote of your board. Each officer shall serve for one-year term. If the chair or vice chair become vacant simultaneously, then we go to the longest-serving member, they call that the pro tem, to act as the chairman unless the other vigil. I, I think I've seen a lot in my short time with the county now, I've also seen that occur, where we've had the pro tem serve. Never thought, in years I've been doing this, over thirty-some-odd years, just in general representing boards, I very rarely saw it, and of course, I saw it within the past year, here in Johnson County. Such acting, chairperson shall share, serve as a chair until an election can be held, and that any officer, meaning if you're the chair, vice chair, secretaries, can be removed by a motion unanimous. So that means all of you would have to agree to removing that person from office. So let's hope I don't have to see that ever. Chairperson, again, your duties is determine points of order and procedure. The chair is the, and we're calling you chairperson, it can be chair, just qualification. The Board of County Commissioners, we were putting chair. If your pleasure's chair as a person, a chairperson, just let me know, we can revise that throughout. Chairperson may call a special meeting in compliance with the law, and the chairperson shall perform all duties incident to the office that needs any signatures or anything. Thank you, Megan. Vice chair also serves in the time when the chairperson's unavailable or can't exercise because of one thing or another. The secretary is designated as a staff member, I believe that's Megan, who is serving in that role, am I wrong? Megan, you serve as the secretary, or do we?
Sherry Cross for the zoning boards, but I should back up.
Okay, so just so you know, that is, and then here that that happens. And then staff also provides you professional and technical assistance, as you may need. So we need some clear up, do you want to be called chairperson or chair? Or do you have a preference? In addition, I need to make sure we clean out through this document, Board of County Commissioners throughout, because it is getting confusing.
Terry Atwell, I vote, just vote chair.
Okay, is chair okay?
Yeah, Jason Cooper, I don't really have a preference.
Okay, I'll change.
I don't have a preference either.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and change it throughout that document. So moving to page five. And I'm moving quickly, I'm trying to get through this, I promised. Parliamentary authority, again, that's the Roberts Rules of Order or any subsequent additions. It's just reiterating this, that we're following that, if in the absence of a rule in this document, that's the rules of procedure. I think Jay and staff, now Sean and everyone, is so well-versed in parliamentary procedure, because we've learned every imaginable motion through the county commissioners lately, that I think they understand. In addition, I don't know if I passed out of the training, I thought, a little cheat sheet for parliamentary procedure. You may want to have that always handy when you're conducting meetings, so that you guys can pull out that handy-dandy sheet if there is a question, so we have a proper motion. But if, I thought I passed it out, but I don't remember now, that was a while ago, what, two months ago? So anyway, FYI on that. Open meetings, of course, you all know, we follow open meetings, closed session. It would go in executive session, but at this point, we publish notice, and this is the direction we're planning, just making sure we codify that process. Quorum, since there are nine of you, a quorum is five. Quorum, a majority would be of that quorum. So let's say I had five people present for a quorum, and you have an item that comes up, then it would be three to two for a majority of those who are present. So you need a quorum present, so it can vary. Generally speaking, if I have all nine of you here, then the quorum would be, would be five, and the majority would be five, okay? And this became a sticking point, because I was asked this question in front of the commissioners the other day, and I was tired. I think we were at five o'clock, and I, I was like, well, I didn't even know what they were asking at that point. Sometimes law requires a supermajority, when you have a supermajority, then out of nine, you would need seven. So just so you know, and I'm not sure if there's any circumstances that this board would have, but just so you know, that's how that works out today. So the magic number to, in order to have a quorum, which you hear Megan say at the beginning of the meeting, that there's a quorum, is five at the minimum, okay? And we're going to get to you appearing virtually, to make sure that that's also counted in this item. Also, I didn't say with conflict of interest, you can still be counted in the quorum, so you have a quorum, but you can't, you have to abstain if you have a conflict. So you can be counted in the number, that is legally permissible, and under the rules of, under the Roberts rules. So let me explain that. Let's say I have five people present, I have a quorum, one of them has a conflict. That person is counted in the quorum of, of, of what is possible. Then you need a majority to pass that item of the remaining four, which would be three. And then you have one abstain and one no, you know, a no vote. So you've got to always look at your numbers of what it is, but they do count in so that you can meet. If we didn't do it, we could possibly get in never having a meeting, because of quorum and people with conflicts. But as we get down to that, if Megan or anyone has any questions, we should have a lawyer present. They will be able to know those numbers to make sure you're meeting that requirement. Usually, I think they're taking in advance, are you going to be at the meeting? Your attorney, your staff is always calling us, hey, we're going to have this many people here tonight, and they walk through it, so that they're prepared to know how to handle it in the event of a quorum or majority or issue of abstention with conflict. A pause, I took out a lot of information there.
Hey, this is Sean Pendleton, planning staff. I do have a question. This, this situation has come up before in some of our zoning board meetings. For a quorum, that number will always be the majority of the entire attendance, or the entire
Present.
Present.
Yes.
Is, is that the entire number of the board members? Because some boards do have different number of members based on the townships. So will it always be a, a quorum is five, which is the total, even if at some point in time, we have a vacancy in the board, so it's always five regardless of
Correct.
the current standing.
So you've got to get those vacancy filled, or you may not have a quorum.
Right.
So no, and it's always, quorum is different than majority. Majority of those where you're voting are present. So if I have nine-member board, I have to have five to do my business. That sounds weird.
What about if you have it?
Yeah, oh, it's seven. Do you have seven? I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. So this is wrong. So do you have seven on this board? This board right here is nine.
This is correct for the Southwest, it's the Southeast, and we have others that have seven.
That will be a different number.
Right.
And the reason we put that number in here, because this is the, if I was to put the most frequently asked question, that is one of them. And I confused the commissioners, I admit it on the other day, so tomorrow, hopefully I'll be fresh and I'll correct it. But it happens to the best of us, and they go on sometimes. Okay, agendas. Agendas are to be electronically transmitted, is then determined that we do five days prior. We don't say five business days, it's five days. So that's literally what we mean, five days. Some people want business, but we don't do that. And that's just logistically to get deadlines, and especially with these boards, it's hard, because Jay's manning so many staff, so many zoning boards and planning. That's a lot of work to get it all together, and for the Board of County Commissioner, meeting those deadlines. I think they do a nice job in getting that out, by the way. I'm used to communities that did it the day before and day if we were lucky. So I just want you to know how great we have it here. Matters which are not listed on the agenda may be added at the beginning unless there's an objection by a majority of the members. That's a little different than what the, the commissioners are doing. But that's more, they're dealing more of a whole final decision, you're a advisory board. So if you do want to add something, that can be occurring. This next one is ex parte communication. And Planning Commission had a lot of discussion This next one is ex parte communication and planning commission had a lot of discussion and input on this. Actually, I just borrowed this exactly from the planning commission bylaws. A lot of this is consistent with the planning commission borrowing it. But ex parte communications are communications made to influence you off the record and out of the presence of other parties. This is a topic that was a discussion during the training and we had a lot of feedback and interaction on this point. I'm not saying, and I'm going on the record once again, I'm not saying that you are prevented from talking to people. We just want you to make sure you put what you learned on the record to share with the other people on the board. And then, because that may have a bearing on their decision on that item. Or it may have a bearing on your decision and people want to know about that item. I think the question was asked of me, and ex parte can be verbal or through electronic digitally means. I think I was asked at that meeting, well, what if I go out and investigate? And I said, well, really staff should be following through and providing you that information. But if you did do that, you need to bring it in so that everybody knows what you did. And I'll tell you, I see it done extremely well with the Board of County Commissioner. They will work in like a conversation. You know, I was talking to Joe Schmo and he had informed me about da, 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 da. That is great. They've put it on the record. The others know what it is. It's conversational. It was a, what do you call it? A decision point for them and the decision that they were making and voting on. I'm not saying you have to report everything you learn, like a narrative and going on the record. I'm just saying those items that are, that made you make your decision or you think is important to the conversation. For instance, a setback, let's say you went out there, you looked at it. And you saw that the way that it was a corner lot or something, the way it was set up, that it was unique to that. So you go, you know, I went out there and had an opportunity to look at it and here's what I observed. That's fine. That's a big decision to setback. So you would take that in. Now, if I went out there and I said, oh, there's all these trees, but it has nothing to do with the setback because it's in the middle of the property. And you know, you learned that these trees are, I don't know, whatever, growing apples or something. What, that's not relevant to your decision nor your decision making that you made in the thing. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Cause I know there was a lot of discussion on that at the training. Okay, moving on. Order of business. This just codifies what you're doing, which is outstanding right now. Just putting it in the order of business and how this can go. And I don't know if we have it that you can move it at the discretion of the chairperson. So if you have to accommodate for certain things, you can move things around and the chair can let, let the board know. Public hearings, just like you've done in the past, they're required by state law. And you go through the process that you tradition and just just codifying that. Minutes, same thing. Minutes are to be distributed. It's codifying that. Public participation, we've made some changes. This came from the planning commission. What was in the rules of order that you were seeing with the Board of County Commissioners was not legal. What they were limiting. The chair, former chair knew that. And so we were in his ear not to enforce a lot of what was been there. This is the law and enforceable. The rest of it, you know, they're permitted to do. And if there's ever any question, Jay, if we see something, Jay will and staff will bring it to our attention. Or if you have a question, we'll do it. But pretty much, you know, we want to make sure we're not, we're a limited public forum. So they have, individuals have first amendment rights to speak and we cannot limit content at all. But we can to a degree, except if it is slanderous, profane, insulting or threatening remarks. We can limited. Mostly you can do time, manner and place. So you can vary as to how long that you can. Let, allow public comments, how that looks. And I guess now, you know, different things can be limited. There's no right under Kansas law to public comments. But if we're going to provide it, you know, there's a limited that you have to provide. So to answer the question, no, it does not need to be recorded. It does not need to be videoed. You do not have to provide it by Zoom. It's not required. So just getting that out. That is an issue that's been discussed among the board and that's how, that's open to interpretation and discretion. As you're trying to get the business done and there may be situations where you may say for this meeting, because it's controversial. You know, I'm not going to judge. You're the chair. You make that decision. You make that call. I'm not imposing any views. I'm just telling you what you can and can't do and under the law. And if there is some dialogue about that, that should be prior to the meeting and we're discussing and staff's discussing. But I'm not getting into the politics of it. I'm just telling you the law. That's not my, I'm, I'm just the attorney. So. Okay, to what?
Scroll, okay, keep going, keep going. Okay, right there. So the six point zero, six point zero three. We, we have to allow public comments prior to us even hearing agenda items. Is that what you're saying?
Nope. You don't have to. You can pick where you want. That is not. And, and at this point, it's been in Johnson County on the boards that that is an item we are allowing. It's been decided to allow public comments. When you allow it, when you want to move it around, what you want to do, that's your call. But this is your document that's telling you how it's going to go. If you don't want public comment, that I'm going to have to have a talk with you. Because I think, you know, that is the direction that we want to allow public comments, whether they're written or verbal. We just want to make sure that your business, the order of your business is getting done.
Right. So when, when we, when we hear an item, there's always with, within that item. There's always a public comment regarding that item.
Okay, yeah.
According to this, and, and correct me if I'm wrong. Is this section here allowing anybody to come up with a comment? That has nothing to do with any of our agenda items.
You know, I'm just looking here. Did we, I don't think we defined what public comment is in this document. It got omitted. So good call. We need to add a paragraph on public comment. Public comment is something that's not on an item that's on your agenda. It's something to deal with your, your, just your zoning district, just in general. Public comment, I would presume you would rarely have that. Public comment also is when you have an agenda item and you can permit them to speak on an agenda item. So there's two types of public comment, one that's not on an agenda item and the other. And somehow I need to make note of this. We have omitted the public comment section from our planning commission bylaws. And that allows, thank you, Terry. And so that gives the clarity on that. It also gives a discretion to the chair to limit the, and that's not in here. And I don't know how we overlooked that, but thank you for catching that.
What, what I don't want to have happen is that we were volunteers, okay? And we have to go through the whole process of hearing an item from the planners. And then we have questions and we hear from the applicant and then we open it up to public comment for that. And then it goes back to the board that just kind of knowing probably what's coming forward. I mean, if we have thirty or forty people show up, that is not regarding an agenda item. My, my time is valuable.
Well, the chair can require, we're requiring now that you have to sign up in advance. So you've got an idea for an agenda item. So you can keep it. I would recommend you do the same. I think that's just good time management. And you know, I know that there is people who may not, but you advertise it, but that's something you can decide. We can, that's in the public comment section. So I need to pull that over for you, that it didn't get in. But thank you. It is, that is something I think of value just from time management. It's not trying to preclude people. We're just trying to get people to sign up so you know where you're moving things along and limiting that discussion. We also in the public comment section, we don't say two minutes. It's up to the discretion of the chair. You can set a time limit, three, four, five. I wouldn't go over five. But that's where you limit. The applicant, you try, there's also with that, the public comment and public participation. I noticed that's not in here. Gee, I don't know how we, these got omitted. So this is definitely coming back to you for your next meeting now. There needs to be about the applicant too, and that was omitted. I don't know how that happened, but it did. So we'll get that in there. The next is recess meeting. You can recess on matters that are on the agenda. Voting members, you all are voting. Again, this language was put in here. It was written by Rick Lynn from way back and I left it in. It really, I, there's a way to make this concise, but I just left it in because I felt it was pretty detailed for you and maybe of value. So you know, if something fails, how that works. But really it just is regurgitating what I think was in your first section, more just doing it. But I left it in. Telecommunication voting, that's the way where you're doing by video now and telephone. And just making sure that that's permissible voting. I think this is good practice that we've learned this from COVID, that we need to be putting this in. It's also in the newly revised Roberts Rules of Order about telecommun- communication and voting. Lastly is public records. As you know, what we're dealing with is public records, expenses associated with this. There are costs for people who request public records from, we have a resolution on cost, just so you know. We do not always charge. If we're able to provide something electronically or easily that it's available, we do not charge. But sometimes if we have to go gather it, then we do charge. And then these amendments, just so you know, once you approve these, they have to go to the board, the Board of County Commissioners for their approval. So they'll review these and then once they approve them, that's when these rules are effective. If you want to amend them, you can bring them back, amend them, and then they go back up to the board. And if there's any conflict with any provision, the state law will always control. So in the meantime, before these are revised, you know, there may be some law that changes on open meeting or something that is not in here. The law will prevail over these bylaws. Keep in mind, I highly recommend, I think I've said this when we did our training a month or two ago. It's really helpful if we do. You do review these every year, every other year, just to keep, make sure everybody's on the same page and there's no revisions. If, usually if you've done it and you've had a board, it should take quick. It's just that I had to add some things and going through it. So you're our first guinea pig since the planning commission. So I apologize that those two clauses, hopefully somebody took notes. So we'll, we'll go ahead and put that in tomorrow and email that out. So I did that in one breath, got it all out. Are there any questions? I need to insert this and I would feel more comfortable you do not vote until we see that. I just don't feel, I want to make sure you know what I put in there.
Rebecca Barton, I just have a, probably a dumb question, but as far as putting how many board members are on the board? Could we just change that to designated number? That way if we do have to change the number for some reason, we can? Or do we want to have it in there? I just don't understand why we. We have nine members on the board. Why don't we just say we have a designated number and that way if we ever switch? Or is it pretty much carved in stone?
This is Sean Pendley, planning staff. I'll try to take an initial response to that and see if maybe the board members or Peg has any thoughts. I believe it has to be set at the nine because this board is, I think, part of the resolution with this board was established. It's based on the townships and number of members from the unincorporated area. Each board is set with a, a number and that is as it was established by resolution by the Board of County Commissioners. So I don't think we can deviate from that by individual board.
Would you, would you remind me when that resolution was?
So when the, each of these boards were consolidated, they were, they were appointed, that was approved and adopted as part of the resolution. So when this board was consolidated in two thousand and two, that's when that was established. And I think that's, it's based on very specific requirements for the townships, the trustees and, and unincorporated members.
Just a little bit of history. When I came on the board in two thousand and three, I think the board was made up of seven. And I think this nine came about when we had all those people that were interested. And they finally got the phone call to be on the board. So I don't know if it's a, if that number should be a seven or a nine, but it's currently a nine.
Well, just to clarify, you, guys, your memory is really good here. So let me, this says here, and this is interesting. I've not really seen it written this way. So this is interesting. Shall consist of not less than five members nor more than nine members. So it can go up to nine, it can go back down, but really it should give us direction of a number. And so to answer your question, it could be seven, it could be nine. So when you were inquired, who was that who inquired? Was that Becca? Yeah, you are right. It could do that, but that's going to take board action on a resolution to correct that. So you can't just say, I mean, we have nine right now. So that's what they've been appointing. But I can sit, tell you in the future, we're going to have to correct that resolution to get a set number.
Terry, Terry Atwell again. And they're bringing up really good points, Peg, because I'm sure you guys know gardener annexed a bunch more property. So our bore, our, our area is getting chewed up. And we're having less and less people to pick from to fill our board. I foresee in the near future, nine is going to be too many for our board because our area is dwindling down.
Peg, it's Jay Leipzig, just a suggestion. Could it be, if you change four point oh one to up to nine members, if you said up to nine? If it's a way you would, it's still consistent with the enabling. Ordinance at the board when it was established, but maybe that would, and if it does fluctuate with less members over time, it.
Well, it's really important we establish so we know what a quorum is. So if I don't say it's nine or seven, then you vary, then where does that number vary with quorum? So to me, this is a drafting error.
Excuse me, just a question. Isn't a, a quorum of the current members of the board?
Yeah, that, well, yeah, but you have a sitting board. So you've got to have your starting board number maximum so that you know where your quorum is. If you have that moving, then you never will know your quorum. And I'm worried you're going to get someone to legally challenge your action that you later adopt. So we've got to have that number solid.
So just, I'm just asking questions because I don't know. So if you're, you're, you have a board that is up to nine. And you said that the number back then was five?
Yeah, up, it was five up to nine, it said.
So no matter what, you have a quorum, correct? Cause if it's five.
Well, no, you have to pick. You have to pick the number. You can't deviate that. I have to have the maximum number that you have. This is drafted incorrectly. We, okay, if you went to a state statute, it may say you can have a zoning board of a minimum five up to nine. So then when the county comes in to create the zoning board, they have to pick the number. And then if I want to decrease it, I have to go back in and amend it. If I want to increase it up to nine, I can do it, but I have to pick a number. You can't use a moving target. Someone has to know a number.
How often do you change that? That board member number, every year?
No, some never change. We have ones that have been since their creation and it never changes.
Only when they're consolidated, Sean Pendley, planning, that, that's why the only time that that changes, I believe, is when the boards are reorganized or consolidated. Like in this case, so as Peg mentioned, that would be, so when that resolution was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, that established the number. So in two thousand and two, it was set at nine. If we're going to deviate from that now, as Peg mentioned, we would have to amend that resolution, go back to the board to change it. So this may be an appropriate time to revisit that to see if maybe we agree.
Did we get, do we? Were we, did we overstep our bounds? Did we get, do we, where we, did we overstep our bounds between two thousand and two and now to up the number to nine?
No, because I think in two thousand and two, it was set at nine. That's when I think that was done.
Oh, okay.
Your regulate, it's in your regulations. In the regulations, it says nine. So in your regulations right now, it says nine.
So say in two thousand and three, when there was only seven, we were just running short.
Right.
I think that's correct. I think that has happened over time.
That's what.
Certain periods in time, we were just operating with less than the total number of members, which you can do, you can do. But it's not a good practice because as we discussed, that quorum is established and you don't want to be running the risk of not meeting a quorum when you have vacancies.
Right. Terry Atwell again. I just think that we're, with Gardner chewing up all this excess property, we're, we're getting fewer and fewer people to start picking from that are going to fall within, you know, McCamish and Gardner Township. So at some point, we're probably going to have to revisit that total number.
And there's more to come, I've heard. So, I mean, I agree. It is coming. So I think this is a larger discussion that we'll have to have in the upcoming months to year, within the year, because I think we're going to see it.
Well, and it's, whether our, our boundaries are getting smaller, but the interest.
Is waning.
Is.
Sorry. Didn't mean to be the bearer.
Well, you know, we get compensated so much. It's hard to turn it down.
I know. So at this point, I will go back with the help of Megan and me. We'll work on this and get it out to you. And I don't think it'll take that long. It's just Peggy getting me available time to put eyes on it to, that's my problem. To review it and then get it out to you again. So we have another meeting. When is that?
Peg, the next meeting, Jay Leipzig, would be February twenty second.
Okay. So if we could bring it forward then, if everything meets with your approval with the revisions, we'll get it to you in advance so you can read it. And then you can call me, you know, contact me if you have any question, email. If that meets with your approval, you would vote that night and then it'll go on the agenda of the Board of County Commissioners at their next meeting for agenda review. And then through the process.
John DeGrand, I do have one quick question. Just popped into my head. Under the meetings, it defines the meeting as the fourth Wednesday at six thirty. If we adopt these bylaws and then decide to change the meeting date, location and time, would they have to be amended?
Yes, and that's not a.
Yeah. Loop around that?
No, you have to, you could do a special meeting. So here's your trick to get around it. You could, but that's work on poor Megan to send out notice, but you could call a special meeting for that day. But it's not your regular meeting and you still would have to meet that time. So the best place is if you want to change that, now's the time to change it.
You couldn't put a statement in there saying that the meeting date and time is posted at the.
No, you have to, under open meetings, especially with this, we have to declare when. And also we have to keep aware of the staff because you, it's like amazing with the number of boards that they have to man. Did I say man? They have to staff each time. So that's where it just, you need to pretty much be clear.
Mr. Chair, Jay Leipzig, the planning director, I would also say too, that, that our goal moving forward is to update this document every year. At least fight a review so we don't get in the situation, you know, where it hasn't been updated in five years. We're, we're going to put this on a, on a regular schedule to update it every year, review it to make sure it's consistent.
Okay, Terry Atwell. So then does our board, do we want to stick with a six thirty time or do we want to consider moving it to six?
Want to think about.
What's the other zone? You can think of that between now and next month, but what is your other zoning boards do?
That's a, Sean Pendley planning staff. That is another great question. When I first started here, three years ago, we had three different zoning boards. All three met at different times. We had one meeting at six, one at six thirty, one at seven. We had the recommendation to change that at that time to make them a consistent time, six thirty for all zoning boards. Certainly that can be changed by individual zoning boards and set a different time. Also, we changed it with the thought being the location where we have the meeting, being if it's in a, here in Olathe. And we have this option for a virtual meeting or in person that, that gives time for people to, whether it be get home and then come back to the meeting. If you're driving here in person or if you're on Zoom, it's obviously more flexible. But that's another thing to consider, being now that we're in a different meeting place rather than Gardner. So those are all good questions to consider and talk as a board.
I have a question. This is Megan, secretary. What about, we tend to, when we're making our schedule for the year of the meetings, if it falls on a holiday, we automatically change the date. Is that covered in these bylaws or does that have, does that follow, it has to be a majority vote of all members?
It should be that, yeah, you have to do a special resolution or something to change it. So I don't know how you've been doing it.
Actually, the way we do that, so we establish the calendar the year before and that's actually approved, I believe, with the Board of County Commissioners. I think that they bring that forward and there's a calendar change and that gets adopted. So it doesn't always follow the, the set day. If there's a deviation of that, I think that's changed with the calendar. But I don't know, Jay, if has.
On that, on that point, Jay Leipzig, I'm, one suggestion I guess I would have is if there was some particular language we could use that integrates in the, the, this yearly calendar established by the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay.
Something like, something like that.
Where's that clause? I'll add that open meetings. Did we say that? Members shall receive it. Okay, so let me put something here to add a clause regarding, say that again? Oh, I saw six point oh three. Was it six point oh one? Okay, do you, what did you just say, Jay?
Just some particular clause that, that the, the schedule and meeting, meeting schedule may, may be adjusted or upon review of the yearly calendar by the Board of County Commissioners. Something to that effect. Yeah, next available date.
I will clean that up. I'm just putting a placeholder there so I don't forget. Okay. And I think I've got everything. So what we're going to do is change to throughout, change Board of County Commissioners, just to recap real quick. Make sure I put it, chair and Board of County Commissioners, so I know. So I don't throw out document. Okay, I will go ahead and make these changes. We'll get this out. Any other questions?
I have one more question, Sean.
Hey, we got to make Ryan work. He's on the line too, right, Ryan?
Just out of curiosity, how many, where do all the, the zoning boards meet currently?
Sean Pendley, all of the boards are currently meeting here in the County Administration Building. So all boards meet in the same room we're here in.
Okay.
And that change again was, part of that was done when we went to the change with optional virtual or in-person meetings. So that was the main intent for why we changed to this location because we have the technology available to do that.
You got it.
We also have cameras here that can pick up the video, whereas in other facilities, we didn't have that ability to do the technological, technological change. But yeah, that's, that was the change made as a result of the Zoom and the hybrid meetings.
My, the reason I was asking was the timeframe currently reflects that, you know, if we were meeting in Gardner, it would be less of a drive for all of us that are driving up here to.
So, okay, so that, but the county business and recording and all of that, that's the issue too.
Right, I wasn't, I wasn't against what's currently happening. I just.
Yeah, that was the purpose for that change. That's correct. Yeah, it was due to the technology adding that ability and having monitors and videos set up. That was the best decision is to have the meetings here in the Administration Building.
All right, I don't want to keep you. I've kept you long enough. I said a half hour. I was being optimistic, so.
Becky Barton, can we please have the, this document mailed to us as well? Because it's more convenient for me.
I believe this Sean Pendley planning staff, I believe that draft bylaws in this current form was emailed from Megan to all the board just this evening. But as Peg.
It was right when it started.
Yeah, we'll, we'll also, I think, we will be sending out the revised bylaws, hopefully the week before, when we send the packet out for the February meeting. We'll send out the updated document with that packet, I believe.
So that'll be, yes, Rebecca, that'll be Jay Leipzig, that'll be on the fifteenth of February.
Okay. So Ryan, do you have anything to add? Is he there?
No, I do not. I have to admit, I, I've just now gotten the ability to unmute myself. So I didn't really have any control while attending, so I apologize and I'll work in, I'll make sure that's taken care of next time. I also don't think I have the ability to turn on my camera, so.
That's okay. I think I covered everything. I don't think there was anything, did I misstate or you had any add-ons?
I do not.
Well, that's, makes me happy that I didn't misstate something. So, all right, well, thank you for this opportunity. We'll be back next month and whenever you invite me back again.
All right, well, thank you.
All right.
All right. So do we have, next item is, do we have any other business for the board? Okay, well, then if.
Well, Becky Barton, I would like to discuss, is there a possibility of moving us back to Gardner?
So, Ms. Barton, uh, thanks, Jay Leipzig. The reason, I guess I would prefer if we're, because these meetings are broadcast through Zoom, just to increase the public participation. And I, I think our, our Zoom access or Zoom capabilities are, are really limited if we have it at the, at the Senior Center Building. That was kind of the point for doing this. Now that may change in the future and if it does, we can certainly, you know, this, that, that's the benefit of the bylaws, where they're written to. If we continue to update them, revise it as, as we need to. But that was the, kind of the intention with, with having it up here, just because the techno, technology and the capabilities to be able to do that.
Ryan, is he still here? Because I have to check this. There's a state statute, if I recall, that businesses to be conducted in Olathe for some reason on our seat, but I don't know. Applies also to the boards and commissions. So just so you know, I need to check that. I, I, I think it does, but I don't want to misspeak without looking at that statute. So Ryan will look for it and get with Jay, but I, I know there's a statute out there about why we're always here in Olathe.
Well, Jason Cooper is, historically, I believe each of the zoning boards have had their meetings in, well, in their districts. You know, in Gardner, in, you know, up in, you know, like some township and.
And would, when you speak of boards, are you, are you, speaking of all boards that are in, within the county? Fire boards, zoning boards, township boards?
So, yeah. Okay, good point. Good counsel. Let me check it out then, but let me go look.
Again, I'm not against any, I'm just bringing up those.
Aren't our boards, like fire district twos here? So fire districts aren't our boards, county boards, so all.
Well, fire district two is the county board because the commissioners are the fire board.
One in the same.
Right.
Turn on a different hat.
Right, but, but like fire board, or for fire board district three is, right? Well, it's ours. It's, it's in Johnson County.
Yeah, but it's not a county-run fire district that we run it. You know what I mean?
Right, but that's, they're all boards within the county. That's what.
Yeah, we only are talking about boards created by the county or the county. So that board is created for wherever they serve in that district. We are talking about only boards and commissions that are created by our board, which there's about.
Who, who appoints the, the board members?
Not for district three, we do not.
But who does?
The, well, who points for what?
Who points to those positions on the board?
Which board?
Say fire board three.
I don't know where that's located, but it is not, it is not Johnson County.
But it, it would be the, it would be that commissioners area that, that appoints that fire board.
No, 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 no. It would not.
Okay, how about fire board, how about fire board district one? Who points those?
You don't like that either. Oh, wait, I'm wrong.
The commissioner does for that district.
You kept going, I'm wrong. You're right. We do. I'm wrong. But I admit it. You're right. You had to keep, you had to keep going until I could remember that. So.
I have to do that all the time too.
But at least I'm good and I admit it. So, so let me look into that question, but it, it's a logistic for recording too and what we're doing. To be continued.
Yeah, I've made a bit of it to, to take a look into it.
Yeah, but I don't, I will take a look legally, but I would agree with you. I know what you're saying.
I just didn't want, I actually didn't want it, I don't, I don't, I'm not leaning either way here or Gardner or wherever. But I didn't want it, you to get tied down to all boards.
Yeah, you're correct. I'm wrong and I admit it. I admit it. You're right. And we do do different other boards in different locations. You're right. I'm not going to hear. Thank you. You've been great. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Well, do we have any, any other questions, comments?
None.
All right, good. Well, it's entertaining.
Oh. Terry Atwell moves to adjourn. Dona Gethman second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Push and carries.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, folks.